And you gotta let him back in.
There he is. He's in the waiting room. There we go.
All right, Ryan, can you see us and hear us now?
I can see you and hear you. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes, very good. So we can begin the meeting of the Personnel Committee for June 27th, 2022. Is, we can call the roll first.
Sure. Um, Terry Burkhillo.
Yep.
Ryan Coleman.
Yeah.
Ron Scher.
Here, and we are joined by the mayor. Is there any public comment? Has anyone indicated any comment?
There has been no comments received.
Okay, so the first item will be the approval of the minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 meeting.
Brian, there's Dan, it was here.
There'd be a motion on approval of the minutes.
Um, yes.
Okay, and I'll second that. Any discussion changes? For favor, all right, okay. Next, we have under Old Business, the Town Manager Annual Performance Evaluation Process. I appreciate the comments that I've gotten from several people. Ryan, as you know, you saw this document in its various iterations, and the most recent one, the only addition to that that you have not seen was a recommendation from Brian, that we had a question, an issue, is knowledgeable about the town's emergency management plan, and is best can be determined is prepared to act in emergency situations. That's an additional item. All others are what you've seen. We had, uh, generally, I was able to incorporate people's comments and wordsmithing, and there were no issues. There was uh, one from Terry where there was a disagreement between Terry and myself about the first question where we say maintains positive, in its final iteration, maintains positive relationships with the mayor and other council members of both parties. And if I recall, you had a disagreement with that one.
I think the language was different when I initially disagreed. I still think that it, um, excuse me. It's impossible for me to speak to anybody else's relationship, that we can only speak as to our own relationships. I, for instance, couldn't speak to Brian's. I, I don't have any, any knowledge, nor do I imagine he has knowledge as to what my relationship is with Ryan. So I don't think we need the, uh, and I, I don't know his relationship with the mayor either. I, I think it just, we could say, um, it should maybe with the council, um, or, um, or with, um, I just think it's too, I don't think anybody can speak to other people's relationships.
Can I add to that? I have a longstanding argument with questions that have two questions in one. So positive relationships with the mayor and members of the other party are two separate questions. So if I were writing this, I would just say maintains positive relations with the council.
That's what I would say.
I'm okay with that.
Sounds good.
Positive relationships with the.
You want to say individual members of the council?
Well, then we get to Terry's concern.
I think with the council, and then when.
Somebody could answer and in their comments say, well, I don't, you know, doesn't have a relationship with, but in the, in this specific question, uh, is there anything else here?
I, on town management, I'm four and five.
Yeah.
I think both require, would be relevant for 360 review, that these are things that if department heads were weighing in that, um, they could speak to, uh, but that I don't think any of us know ha- know enough about what Holly is doing to know that Ryan is reasonably managing her to ensure this. And also, um, I don't know the town's emergency management plan, and thus I couldn't speak to whether or not he, but people who do know it could speak to whether he's up on it. I mean, I think they're good questions, but they're for a different review.
Well.
Well, the town's emergency management plan is developed by the town's emergency management staff. They meet twice a year. I, I chaired that meeting. Um, and we get updated on what's going on, but I don't think anybody on the council knows what the emergency management plan is. And since much of it has to do with security, it's not public information. It isn't all public information.
There are several of these questions that we know about indirectly and not directly. Some we may should not have, but some we communicate with the community. In some ways, we know that he's on the radio, you know, those kinds of things. We can comment on even if we don't know them directly.
Well, but I, I do know that directly. I know that he's on the radio.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I can, but I don't know anything, honestly, know nothing about the town's emergency management plan.
Well, this was Brian's.
It would certainly wouldn't hurt that, uh, we all go a little more knowledge on, on, on that. There's a way that the council could be briefed on our emergency management plan. Right?
We can certainly put on the agenda for just an update on, on the plan. If the council is interested in, you know, kind of a broad strokes overview of the plan and how it's updated and when it's updated. If that's something the council wants.
But that's sort of a different question. It's a good question, important, but it's different than how well versed Ryan is in it. And I think if this were 360, members of that group, probably including the mayor, of course, would be part of the three, that's the beauty of a 360, is you get other people weighing in, but this is just us. So if Ryan cuts up and he tells me about the plan, or a group of other people got up and tell me about the plan, I'll know about the plan, but I'll still won't know the intricacies of, of, you know, whether he's ready, really ready to go in an emergency situation in the way that the state troopers would, uh, and other, the, the fire chief and other people who are part of that plan and, and working with him on it as, as colleagues.
Well.
Actually, the town manager is in charge of our, of public safety, correct, Ryan?
Correct. I am the de facto director of public safety.
So yeah, it's very important to evaluate and maintain on the evaluation. I just think, uh, it would be nice that, uh, we're all aware of exactly what our emergency management plan is.
Well, there is the opportunity, there will be, as we laid this out for unable to evaluate.
But who, who, other, only the mayor will be able to evaluate.
Maybe, maybe the question is too specific. Maybe the question would be better phrased if said the, the manager keeps the council informed during emergencies.
I mean, that's something we can answer.
That would be under Council Relations.
Or, or, uh, the, the town manager has responded to emergencies appropriately?
I, I would like to see him evaluated on actually his, uh, knowledge of the emergency, uh, management plan and his preparedness to do so.
In that case, I agree with, with Terry. I don't know how I could evaluate that, but I could evaluate his effectiveness in responding to emergencies.
And again, I, I, I think this is a super important question, but for our next 360. And I don't recall whether this question was asked or something close to it in our last 360, but it's, it's, it's a great 360 question. It just, I don't um, it's, it's why 360 reviews are so terrific.
Would you support effectively response to emergencies? Because, you know, we can all differ on different nations of emergencies.
Yeah, um, but it would be nice to evaluate, you know, because I really don't know uh, what Ryan's responsibilities are in the emergency management plan.
That's the point. None of us know that. So.
I think that's something that should be important center and, and, and understand and maybe leave it in the evaluation.
If we said effectively response to emergencies, and then the opportunity to comment is there will be for each of these questions. You could indicate, I would like to, I would like to get a sense of his knowledge of the emergency management plan or something like that.
Yeah.
Of course, it's really complex because the, the town's emergency management plan is integrated with the university's emergency management plan.
And that's something that in discussion comes out and there's.
Yeah, we wouldn't know what the UConn plan was.
Right, well.
And, and there are also different emergencies, you know, there's a, there's a, a guy running around with a shotgun, and there's a tornado. Those are two totally different.
Gentleman here could have executive powers if needed, so in a state of emergency. So if he's granted executive powers in a state of emergency, I would certainly would like to know that he has full knowledge of preparedness in emergency situations.
Well, that's something I think you, we can ask him from the council. It's not really, because we don't know how to evaluate when he knows at this point.
Are you okay if we say effectively response to emergencies and in the comment portion? Now, the prior question, which has, has been pointed out, we have a whole lot of stuff in there, and I am of the opinion that we can generally exercise, although we don't know directly, an evaluation of his ability to recruit staff in various ways. There may be too many elements in this. But part of, uh, part of his job is recruiting staff. And indeed, that's maybe a very important part of his job.
But I don't know, I don't know getting into the weeds. I don't know where, I, I know Holly's doing it, but I don't know what Holly's doing to do do outreach to ensure that we get a pool of populate, uh, we get a population of applicants that promotes equity and diversity. I mean, I, I just don't know. I assume, and I hope. Uh, and, but, but I couldn't speak to whether it's in fact happening.
Or even to what Ryan's instructions to Holly are about doing this.
Well, at the end of the day, the important thing is have we recruited when we have vacancies or in the process of recruiting? Have we been doing a good job in that?
I don't know if we have evaluated the talent itself, uh, in our hiring practices. I, 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 I wouldn't think it'd be a bad idea to overlook, you know, when we do our, our hiring practices and how we're doing with the panel nine and all the other stuff.
Well. There is, there are plans to do a review of the classified system, right? Um, we don't even meet most of the town's employees, so we would, don't even know.
Well. For example, we're hiring a planning double person. We can see that the machinery has been put into effect. And that things seem to be going expeditiously in that regard.
But I don't know that Holly's actually trying to reach populations that we don't usually get. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know what and I don't know that, that Ryan is encouraging her to do that. I don't know, we're just sort of throwing it out to the, the same old, same old, or we're doing something to, and.
I would, I would like to keep this shortened, just to say effectively oversees recruitment of new staff and have the opportunity for people to say unable to evaluate.
And or, uh, new staff is not sufficiently diverse. What's going wrong?
As part of the question?
No, as a part of a, a written comment.
Oh, oh, right, 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 yeah, yeah.
There was a period during Garrett Kennedy's reign when there weren't, didn't seem to be any women hired.
Those things.
Yeah, well, I think it may have, it may have reflected a deeper problem.
So one, one way of hearing this would be is when Ryan promotes, when Ryan does his own, he could, he could list the things that are happening, um.
Well, Ryan, what do you think about this as one of the questions for the council?
I mean, I think, um, I think one of the challenges inherently in any, you know, council review, any board review of its executive is that there's always going to be, you know, a, a large amount of, um, are, large aspects of the job that you're not going to see on a daily basis or have firsthand knowledge of. So I think you could almost pick apart probably eighty percent of the questions. If it's like, I haven't personally seen it, I wasn't there, you know, I don't know. I understand at the same time, you know, um, reservations about providing specific evaluations on things that um, individual council members don't necessarily have first town, firsthand knowledge of. So I, I guess, I think Terry was on to something I was going to touch on in, um, in a second, which is whether it's uh, something I address in my review, or, you know, uh, perhaps I could provide periodic updates, like for the Personnel Committee, on what we're doing with respect to recruitment and retention and that sort of thing. And then based on the, the updates you provided, the information that shared about what our process and our practices are, then I guess you'd have some basis for evaluating whether or not you thought that was a good process, a good practice, or being successful. Yeah, I guess. I mean, I guess to be honest, there's, you know, certain, um, I, I, I just hope that, I guess, before we dive into too many specifics, too much granular level information, you know, I would just say that obviously for, for anybody to be evaluated based on certain metrics, it's it's really essential for that person for the period you're reviewing them to know what those are. You know, no professor would, would ask somebody to sit for a final exam before they've had a semester of, you know, work in that area, right? Um, so I, I guess the same is, obviously, large aspects of this, these are clearly things, there's core aspects of the job, uh, things I would have to be doing. But when it gets into sort of specific, but we really want to explore this area. I think if that's a priority of the council, then, you know, in fairness to me, that has to be identified for the next review period is something you want to see demonstrable progress, and it's not really an eleventh hour sort of thing to shoehorn in.
So you think we should eliminate it this year?
Well, I'm not saying, no, I mean, I guess. I mean, I, in my mind, something that's base, basically effectively oversees recruitment of new staff or something to that effect without the sort of can you swear to how it was advertised, or I, I don't know. I mean, I feel like you can kind of keep it because you get a sense of who's been hired, you know, department heads that I've directly hired. I mean, it's not that there's no knowledge or awareness of, of people that have been brought on, um.
In each of your reports, you talk about new staff, if there's a.
Certainly try to get, try to give the council play by play as things are advertised, as we're so, searching, selecting, hiring.
Yeah.
Not gonna be a stickler, but should Ryan even be commenting on, on, on this evaluation?
Under his contract, he has a role in the development of the instrument.
I like the idea of putting this as goals for the next evaluation, because I, I do think this is a great question. Uh, and I like the idea that that could be part of our personnel updates, um, but I do, I agree that it's unfair, because I know in my head what I'd be looking for. Ryan, if, I, I think it's unfair to sort of put that on Ryan at this stage. Um, and.
Well, where are we? My vote would be have it say effectively overseas recruitment of new staff. Others have a different feeling.
Um. I mean, it's a hard time to be recruiting. It seems like we are getting people hired, um. You know, I mean, to that extent, um, that's as far as I could play, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that's an answerable question, um.
Yeah, and, and I think, again, there are so many pieces to this question.
Then we should eliminate the pieces. I just want to say effectively overseas recruitment of new staff.
You say effectively overseas recruitment of new staff and eliminating everything else?
Yeah, because people can determine different things that relate to quality in that area, and they can comment on that in their comments if they wish to do so. But at the end of the day, I think the proof of the pudding is in the eating, and what we've got is, uh, staff have been recruited to fill positions or not, and that that would be a measure of effectiveness.
And we really don't have a baseline. Where are we starting from? You know, like since Ryan has been hired.
Yeah, that's.
Want to improve this five percent?
Yeah, you, you can't, you can't blame Ryan for past sins, if there are any. Uh, I agree with you on that. Uh, but we are hiring quite a few new people. I mean, it looks like maybe forty firefighters and planning and zoning, so we can effectively evaluate on on, on the hires that he's responsible for.
But I think all we can say is that people are hired. I mean, I don't think, obviously, we can answer the rest of these questions, but put them forward to the next eval.
But the other thing is really clear, is we had better set remind the council that it needs to set some goals to measure people against.
Yeah, as, yeah, we're next, yeah.
Some of these things, one of those quantitative goals and others do not.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Yeah, part of the end of this should absolutely be, and Ryan was the one who said this before, is a set of goals for the next go around, uh, and, and then we have something to measure against.
Right, and it is.
It was, I'm sorry.
It is in the timeline.
Yeah.
Starting at about November.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that.
Which will make us.
A little more reasons.
Yeah.
The, the council has been dragging and feeding on goals, so it needs some.
Okay, so what are we going to do about this one?
I, I think if you want, I think it's okay to just say that effectively overseas recruitment of new staff, period.
Okay. Okay, others.
Number eight, effectively articulates council policies and goals, town staff externally, used on the broader public. These are three separate things.
All right, you want to just eliminate the period after goals?
I'm sure you've fully heard what was said there, sorry.
Oh, okay. Uh, number eight, effectively articulates council policies and goals, and then we had language to town staff, external agencies, and the broader eliminate that, just say, effective place, count policies.
And I'll do, I'll say the same thing about town management, number one. There's no reason to put in assuring full flow of information and maintaining a, you, you said it, the maintain strong relationships with department heads and other key staff, period.
All right.
The more words you have, the harder it is to answer the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, again, the rest of that are great sort of potential goal sort of questions for, for next time.
Um, why isn't the question about UConn included in the external advocacy section?
Down university relations. Very, very, my own thinking was we have a collaborative relation with the university as opposed to an external, but.
I see, okay.
Minor thing on that one. I think we're missing an S on officials, right?
Oh.
You kind of officials?
Yes. Under Town University Relations.
Oh, okay. Yep. Now, under COVID, I got a bunch here, and we have separate questions for way deals effectively with COVID.
Obviously, all COVID sort of belongs under the question of what, how he dealt with, with emergencies.
Yeah. How about if we have to respond to emergencies? I have a number six, and I take the I take, um, I could separate those out, so it's, you know, several questions on COVID. Uh, assured town, during COVID crisis, assured town functions continued to be fulfilled, street presidents assure his town functions continue to be fulfilled. Uh, and then for the others, works to assure safety in town facilities for staff, visitors, and others.
So that we need two questions.
Yeah. Uh, and then a third, but it works effectively with Eastern Highlands Health Personnel to promote testing and other health measures.
I think that's a vague question, uh, because to provoke testing, do you mean, um, promote access to testing or promote testing, um, as virtuous activity?
I was thinking of promoting testing itself, but access to testing would be fine with me.
I think that, yeah, I, that's a cleaner question.
Yeah.
But you know, that really isn't his responsibility. That's Rob Miller's.
So he works effectively with him.
And we pushed Ryan and, um, well, uh.
It's, well, it's not just Eastern Highland, it's also UConn. In that one.
It's just to promote, though. It doesn't say that he was responsible for. And.
Now, uh, Ryan, if I can ask you a question, um, now, are pandemics actually covered in our emergency management plan? As a whole?
I, I believe that there is a section in there contemplating pandemics, yeah, public health crises, yep. I'm wondering, um, I think it was the second subset of this, um, Ron, that you were trying to tease out. I, I feel like, um, a question about facilities and facilities planning more broadly is fair. I mean, we've been doing a lot of work in this area. It actually has been, um, sort of a special initiative this year, will continue to be uh, next year, sort of the next phase of it. So I don't know, when a company, you mentioned, um, safety of staff visitors, others, I, I guess I'm wondering if it couldn't be framed as you know, ensures that, um, you know, something along the lines of facilities are progressively planned for and managed, something to that effect.
You've got to give me a reset. I'm not sure what you. Um.
Ensures that um, the town is is effectively planning to address present and future needs of municipal facilities.
Ensures that the town is effectively planning to, what was that?
I guess basically meet present and anticipated, present and anticipated future needs.
Are you thinking this along the lines of facility studies that are going on and the updates that we'll be getting?
Yeah, I, I think, because you'll, in August, um, the plan anyway, um, the council's meeting in August, the hope is that, um, we'll have pretty close to a, a full, complete working version of the Phase One report. So I think that kind of ties in reasonably neatly with this evaluation, and then the Phase Two, the schematic design, more detailed stuff would be subject to like the next evaluation.
Okay, so that's not a COVID thing, that's.
No, no, I, yeah, with some of these, I guess I thought we were.
Right, yeah, right, okay, that's fine.
Sorry, I misunderstood if you were trying to keep these all tied back to COVID.
That's fine.
But I would put it under town management, facilities management is a big one.
Yeah.
And, and I'm actually surprised it wasn't there to begin with.
So I'll put it under facilities management?
Under town management, one of the question is.
Yeah, so you want to have that not under. Yeah, so you want to have that not under facilities, but but under town management?
Right, it's part of his job.
Okay, even though it's a. Are you, thank you for.
Well, between Kelsey and I will compare notes. Clean it up and get. Back out, right?
Yeah, so what is the, I I asked around the format, how do people answer this?
So we'll put it into a survey monkey? Um, and at the last, before you were at the last personnel. The discussion came up with regards to the people, Terry Rhodes, of doing it before a town council meeting. Um, to have the council still have a hard copy of it, but they haven't done it via the survey monkey. So that we.
Yell people down.
I didn't say that there, but.
It would be something like agrees completely, agrees partially, disagrees, cannot answer.
Okay, so three choices. And, um. I gotta say that since you have stated these all in as positives, there's a, you have created a bias in your answers.
I think there's something to that, um, but there's the disagree opportunity.
Yeah, I know it's there, it's there, but the studies on evaluation say when you've done this, you have, you create a bias.
What you do before, not the three sixty, but years back.
I think we did it anyway. Even though we knew that it was probably, although we may have thrown in some that were negative. Just to, just to make sure that people were thinking, you know, I'm paying attention. I don't see any real point to that. I mean, this is, everybody understands what this is.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be easy enough to make some of the negatives, but I'm not so sure it's really worth it, like.
I don't think so either.
Could change. So we'll. For does not present clear and comprehensible.
Right, so we'll clean this up, get it to the council, and meetings on the eleventh, the next council meeting. Two weeks from.
That's not two weeks. All right. Come on, give me a calendar. June, so the second Monday is the eleven.
Yeah, okay, so we'll get it to the council then. And then, uh, and we will have reviewed it with, well, you've already seen it, but we'll review in final form. And then we'll put it in the final hard copy format. By August twelfth was the date we look to, with Holly's help. And the town manager concurrently will be completing the self-evaluation and submitting it to this committee.
It always helps to have the town manager's self-evaluation before we get, we get, have to do it ourselves.
Completed until, until September twelve.
I've seen the calendar, I just forgot what the fuck that works.
Can we move on then to new business? Under new business, we have the, what does A I S stand for?
Agenda information statement. I knew it started with agenda.
For cost of living for non-union. Personnel of whom there are about how many, twenty, thirty?
Thirty-nine point six two F T, there are some part lines.
And the list appears at the back of the agenda. Amount, the cost of living increases is two point five percent general wage increase. And this is what has a, this brings them into conformity with union personnel as well. The issue. That has been raised is whether the town manager, whose compensation is set directly by the council and who is. One person on this list or any list that reports directly to the council should be included on this list.
Now, generally, uh. Raises are considered after the evaluation, correct?
That would be correct, but a little more complex.
Okay.
It's, it's not a raise, this is not a merit raise, this is.
I I know it's cost of living, yeah, I understand that. Yeah, so the merit raise is done at a different time, so I don't see any problem with the town manager, uh, being included with the cost of living. Because it's not based on evaluation.
It makes life simpler. For various reasons. There's a presumption that. Adequate performance is there, and I don't think we have any issues about that. The only reason against it would be to be, uh, dealing with the town manager as part of a list that, uh. Uh, treats him as if he was one of the several other people, and he's not, he's in a very different category.
Well, he's, but he's like everybody else in that he's non-union.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and, um, we do treat him differently for the actual merit raise, uh, and, um. We could have him on another piece of paper, and but I don't see, I think that would. Right, makes sense.
I just want to offer that, um, I think everything that's been said thus far is accurate, but, um, it just may be helpful to know that. My, my employment agreement does state that, um, it doesn't use the word general wage increase, but basically it says, you know. Salary adjustments that the management team receives is, I actually might even say general wage increase, but in any case. It does say that the council will make determinations based on merit separately. But when it comes to the general wage increase, cost of living adjustment, whatever you want to call it. Um, my employment agreement does say that mine will mirror the management team and happen at the same time and frequency. So.
Same time and frequent.
Ryan, where is that in the contract?
I believe it's in the section on salary.
Because it wasn't what I found.
Yeah.
That's. What you found, that's just.
No, here's what I found.
Well, he was doing it from memory, but it, my read of it was consistent with what he just said.
No, I'll tell you why, hang on a second. All right, section three says, base salary employer agrees to pay. The employer agrees to pay employee an annual base salary of. Hundred and sixty-three thousand in installments at the same frequency are paid on July first, twenty twenty-one. Employee will be eligible for an increase equal to that provided, if any, to, and other management staff based on performance. Okay, so it's on that date, and then. Uh, under performance evaluation, it says that we shall review the performance six months after, um, a hire. And then on an annual basis thereafter, subject to a form that mutually agreed upon. But I don't see anything in here that says that after July first, twenty twenty-one, there's any guarantee.
Well, I would have read that, that you could reason, it was poor drafting, and that you could reasonably rely that that was going to be consist going forward. Why would you change it? Why would you have it one time?
I'll tell you why. Ryan's situation is a little different because people under him are still getting steps. What Matt Hart said was he wanted to be treated exactly the same as every other employee. He didn't want to have us giving him. A payment that was higher by percentage than other people, and we didn't do that. We didn't have a merit increase. We, instead of a merit increase, we said, uh, we'll add. Twelve hundred dollars to your travel allotment.
But he's not mad.
No, I know, I'm just saying it's the practice that we had, and I think it's necessary for us to understand. That by doing this, and then going for a merit increase later, we are changing the council's practice.
But Ryan pushed Warren for assurances that he would be treated like everybody else, and that's what they were trying to capture in this. And and Ryan. We're, we're not going to be doing the general wage index when we're doing his merit.
Well, that's my point, that's my point. We have created steps for Ryan that didn't, didn't.
But that's a different question. That's not this question. The question is whether he, like everybody else, should get a cola.
Yes, well, I agree that he should, like everybody else should get a cola, but then the next part of the sentence that you all are saying. Is after the evaluation, we will talk about merit.
We already agreed to that.
Well, I think that is a new, uh, as a substitute for a step, I understand it. But if we're going to do merit increases, that is a change in town policy.
But we already agreed to do that at the last, would go around with them, that we would, we would evaluate them for a raise and. But that's, that's a different question than tonight, I think.
I think tonight implies the next question. I just want to make sure that everybody is clear on the significance of what this does.
I don't think giving him a general wage index increase is promising anything more. I think we already promised that, but that was in another conversation.
I I'm not objecting to this, I just want to make clear that this is a change. In in how the council has treated the town manager in past years. And I know that last, last year, we, we increased beyond the general wage increase, and that was basically from my perspective. Because the, the people underneath Ryan were still getting steps. And we wanted to make sure that he would maintain the distance, the appropriate distance between the finance director and, um. Public works and so on.
I I I just think it's a totally different question. I think what's in front of us is general wage index. And that it's completely reasonable for him to expect to get it and to get it based on his contract and previous conversations.
I'm not arguing.
Okay, I, but can we put the other point aside and and deal with it when it's on the agenda? All right.
So. For simplicity, two things, independent, essentially of each other. One is the general wage increase dealt with now and effective July first, first pay period after July first will show up. Second is the merit increase, which is based on the evaluation.
Right.
And that will take place in, uh, finally done in October. And that will lead to some different amount of money prior than, and that. Is that retroactive, is there anything in the contract making that retroactive to any particular date, or is it this anniversary date? We we talked about, since he started in November, but we didn't want to do the evaluation in November because of the new council in subsequent years, October. So October is when.
Data higher is November thirtieth, so even though the review is done before, the effective date is in November thirtieth.
The effect date of the increase.
The subsequent. Any subsequent increase.
So we'll get two increases during the year, one, like everybody else, general wage increase. I mean, the only, now, people who get stepping increases, when do they get their stepping?
On their anniversary.
So they're all getting it at different times.
So when we have a calculation here that says the general wage increase, including steps, is a certain number. Does that include the fact that people are getting their step increases in? July, August, September, October, November, it's all prorated?
Yes.
So.
And and those employees who are at the max step. Just gets the general wage increase, they don't get another step.
I have been persuaded by the discussion to change my mind, so that's an interesting aspect to discussion. What is called for, unless there's more discussion, would be a motion to approve.
I can make the motion. Move effective July first, twenty twenty-two, to endorse a two point five percent general wage increase, thus affecting compensation. For non-union regular staff for fiscal year twenty twenty-two slash twenty twenty-three, and to recommend approval to the county council.
For the discussion, all in favor? Okay, is there any other business? Okay, Ryan, are we?
We're good. We'll see you all in a different room shortly.
Ron's the sheet, the yellow copy, the improvement or change in the green copy.